Mayor, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for November 12, 2020, to order at 7:00 PM. On roll call, council members Fasolo.
Here.
Goleback.
Here.
Ingui. Pellegrine.
Here.
Wetchler. Council President Balistrari.
Here.
Mayor Coletti.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Erin. Let's get started. Everybody, please rise for our prayer and flag salute. Oh God, our Father, we ask you to bless our meeting, which we entrust to your fatherly care and protection. Please remove all selfishness and prejudice from our hearts and implant therein a keen sense of justice and a greater love for you and our neighbors. Guide us in our deliberations so that our decisions will always please you and bring your peace and happiness to our community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whereas Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey require at the commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presiding officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing a special meeting notice in the record in Herald News and by posting such notice in the office of the borough clerk, as well as in a public place within the municipal building. And by notifying interested citizens, said notice was posted on January 8, 2020. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being videotaped and will be on Cablevision Channel 77 on Mondays at 3:00 PM and Thursdays at 11:00 AM. The video will also be available on the borough's website at www elmwoodparknj.us. Erin?
Thank you, Mayor. For approval of minutes this evening, we have the October 1, 2020 Work and Executive Session Meeting, October 8 Work Session Meeting, October 15 Regular Meeting, and October 29 Special and Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
Mayor, have a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
On roll call, council members Fasolo.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Ingui. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Wetchler.
Yes.
Council President Balistrari.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to ordinances. For ordinances being read on first reading, we have Resolution R-419-20. Introduce ordinance number 20-35 on first reading. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing an Emergency Appropriation", NJS 40A4-53, be passed and adopted on first reading, and be it resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Thursday, December 17, 2020, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, same can be heard, at which time any persons interested in said ordinance can be heard. Be it further resolved that the borough clerk be, and she is hereby authorized, to advertise an illegal newspaper, notice of introduction and final hearing, as required by law.
Erin, could you break that down for us a little bit?
Yes, Mayor. So this was submitted by our auditor, Mr. Wilcox, and in order to receive emergency monies regarding COVID-19, by state law, we have to have this ordinance. And then there's also two resolutions on the agenda in order for us to accept the money.
Thank you, Erin. May I have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So, second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Ingui. On roll call, council members Fasolo.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Ingui. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Wetchler.
Yes.
Council President Balistrari.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now for ordinances being read on second reading. Resolution R-420-20, introduce ordinance number 20-33 on second reading. Whereas a public notice has been given by the borough clerk, then ordinance entitled "An Ordinance to amend Chapter 2 Administration", more specifically Article 3 of the Code of the Borough of Elmwood Park, titled Department of the Local Government, more specifically Section 2-27, entitled Police Department, more specifically Section 2-27.1, entitled Creation of the Department Members. Whereas said ordinance was introduced and passed at a meeting held on Thursday, October 29, 2020, and that further consideration of this ordinance would be taken up at this meeting. And whereas all persons interested in said ordinance were given an opportunity to be heard concerning the same, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the borough of Elmwood Park that ordinance entitled "An Ordinance to amend Chapter 2 Administration", more specifically Article 3 of the Code of the Borough of Elmwood Park, titled Department of the Local Government, more specifically Section 2-27, entitled Police Department, more specifically Section 2-27.1, entitled Creation of the Department Members. Pass on final reading.
Thank you, Erin. Mr. Philigno, could you break it down for us?
Yes, Mayor. Currently, the ordinance provides for the hiring of police officers six months in advance when we hire, when officers announce their retirement. And that's good for transfer officers because the process is a little more streamlined. They don't have to attend a police academy, and their in-service interdepartment training is less. When we hire a new recruit, which we're going to be doing, you know, in the next phase of hires, there's a six-month police academy, followed by 16 weeks of field training. So the process is longer, and you can't just wait till somebody totally retires and replace them because of the process I just explained. So this allows us to hire a police officer 10 months out when an officer is still on the books but in retirement phase, so that the training is smoother and the transition is easier for the department, and we don't lose manpower.
I think this is a great procedure. It allows a smooth transition, not a herky-jerky one. May I have a motion to open for a public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? Please state your name, telephone number, address, firstborn, all those goodies, Jeff.
Jeffrey Bright, 835. I understand the differences between the public and the D and C. The only thing I have a question about, and I know that the old one also said the same, some of the same things. Regarding the hiring of two, and what happens at the end of either the six or the 10-month period with the second one? If you had 47, number 47 is retiring, okay? And then he's retiring or she's retiring, and you hire somebody, either a former officer or current officer serving elsewhere, or a new recruit. But it says you can hire two, maximum of two. What happens to the second one?
So that would be if 47 and 46 were retiring.
Two people retiring. It's two people, Jeff.
It says you can hire two additional officers.
Not to exceed 47. So we're not going to go past the TO for purposes of total manpower. But let's say if 47 is retiring and 46 is retiring, so then we would be able to do two there.
I understand that, but it simply says, in addition to the number of patrol officers set forth. It doesn't say limited, not to exceed, including the retiree. It's not very well defined. More or less says you can hire two.
Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
Mayor, what you have here is that the ordinance sets out the maximum amount of officers. That's still provided. So those two, the individuals that are referred to as two, if you look at the paragraph above it, where it talks about when there is a recruit which is a transfer, who's also addressing it as two. So that's the same scenario. They still cannot go beyond what the mandate would be.
So for six months or 10 months, we can go to 49, is basically...
That I understand. But what happens to the second one? Then if only one is retired, can you hire two?
No, we would only hire one. We wouldn't hire two if one was retired.
You cannot hire two, because then you would...
Because then we would be going over the other provision, which is the total...
The word "member" or "members".
With more than one person retires, then it would be members, not two. Right? I'm just saying, I think it's based on the...
I understand what you're telling me, but it's... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else here to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? If not, I'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Call the roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Pellegrine. On roll call, council members Fasolo.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Ingui.
Recused.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Wetchler.
Yes.
Council President Balistrari.
Recused.
Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution R-421-20. Introduce ordinance number 20-34 on second reading. Whereas a public notice has been given by the borough clerk, then ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Amend Sections 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11 of the Bond Ordinance", ordinance number 19-15, entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Making of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Communication and Signal Systems Equipment, New Information Technology Equipment, and New Automotive Vehicles", including original apparatus and equipment in buying for the Borough of Elmwood Park, County Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1,585,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, adopted on August 15, 2019. And whereas said ordinance was introduced and passed at a meeting held on Thursday, October 29, 2020, and that further consideration of this ordinance would be taken up at this meeting. Whereas all persons interested in said ordinance were given an opportunity to be heard concerning the same, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Elmwood Park, then ordinance entitled "Bond Ordinance to Amend Sections 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11 of the Bond Ordinance", ordinance number 19-15, entitled "Bond Ordinance to Authorize the Making of Various Public Improvements and the Acquisition of New Communication and Signal Systems Equipment, New Information Technology Equipment, and New Automotive Vehicles", including original apparatus and equipment in buying for the Borough of Elmwood Park, County Bergen, State of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1,585,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds, adopted on August 15, 2019. Pass on final reading.
Erin, once again, can you break this down a little for the public?
Yes, Mayor. So this is an amendment to Bonds Ordinance passed in 2019, ordinance number 19-15. There needs to be an additional $90,000 added to that to account for the two change orders in the 2019 road program.
Thank you. May I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only? If not, I'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
First by Wetchler, second by Fasolo. On roll call, council members Fasolo.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Ingui. Pellegrine.
Yes.
Wetchler.
Yes.
Council President Balistrari.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Here's where you earn your pay, Erin.
Got that right, Mayor. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda. Resolutions R-422-20, Approval of Payroll, R-423-20, Approval of Bills List, R-424-20, Authorized Current Estimate Number 3, Tennis Court Improvements, DeCaro Inc., R-425-20, Authorized Purchase of Equipment, Axon Enterprises Inc., Police Department, R-426-20, Authorized Purchase of Equipment, Gold Type Business Machines Inc., Police Department, R-427-20, Authorized Monthly Payment for Cleaning Services, Recreation Department, Open Works, R-428-20, Authorized Release of Road Opening Performance Bond, R-429-20, Approved Retirement Compensation, R-430-20, Authorized Recreation Department Refund, R-431-20, Authorized Building Department Refund, R-432-20, Appoint Full-Time Laborer, Department of Public Works, R-433-20, Approval of Transfers, R-434-20, Authorized Vacation Payout, R-435-20, Authorized Purchase of Police Surveillance, Goose Town Communications, R-436-20, Authorized Purchase of Vehicle, Buyer Ford, Police Department, R-437-20, Approved COVID-19 Special Emergency, R-438-20, Approving Certification of Chief Financial Officer and Approval of Governing Body, COVID-19 Special Emergency, R-439-20, Requesting Permission for the Dedication by Rider for Donations for Veterans Memorial Park, R-440-20, Authorized Voiding of Sale Checks, R-441-20, Authorizing the Submission of an Application to the New Jersey Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternative Set-A-Side Program 2020, R-442-20, Supporting and Advancing the Participation at Public Meetings. The Borough adopts remote meeting guidelines whenever declared emergency and limited access to the municipal building is required. R-443-20, Appointment of Firefighter, R-444-20, Resignation of Firefighters, R-445-20, Resolution to Approve the Consent Agenda.
That's amazing. Don't you run out of breath?
I do, Mayor. I take a few breathers in between.
I'm dead serious. In clerk school, are you taught that, or you have to have that ability?
You have to have it.
Natural. I guess in the service, she would be in communications, right?
Mm-hmm.
For sure. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
First by Pellegrine, second by Fasolo. On roll call, council members Fasolo.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Ingui.
Yes, on all except the following, R-422-20, Avianna English Check Only, R-425-20, 426-20, 429-20, 435-20, and 436-20. Thank you.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Wetchler.
Yes, and I will put myself on R-422-20, Avianna English Check, and yes to everything, please.
Council President Balistrari.
Yes, let's see. We're recusing on R-425-20, R-426-20, 429-20, 435-20, 436-20. Yes on the rest.
Thank you. Motion carries. Lastly, Mayor, for departmental reports, we have the Library Board Meeting Minutes for September 21, 2020.
Motion to file the report, please, and accept?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Do we need to call the roll on this?
No, you can just do an all in favor, Mayor.
All in favor?
That's all I have on my agenda this evening. Thank you.
Okay, it's that time again for council reports, and we'll start with... Me lady, on the end, she said nothing. That's the first time I've ever heard that one. Mr. Fasolo.
I just want to urge our residents, in light of all the new COVID cases and the increase in cases, to stay safe, stay vigilant, and practice social distancing. Other than that, Mayor, progress.
Thank you. Mr. Goleback.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few words on the election. Obviously, we have some uncertainty as it comes to the... Sorry.
The masks?
There's some uncertainty as it relates to the final results on the local level, but I look at it as a statistical impossibility for things to change. But I'll reserve my comments for December. On the Board of Education end, although they were uncontested, I'd like to congratulate Dorian Asperus, Doug DiMatteo, and Carrie Peretti on their reelection. For those that were aware, there was a vacancy, or there was only two people that filed for three three-year seats. Therefore, the process is basically the name that gets written in the most would be awarded a three-year seat, and we have somewhat of a horse race. Elizabeth Mijacevsky has 87 votes at this point. Ms. Jean Frytek has 72. There's still 1,000 votes to count, so, you know, anything could happen. But our residents took seriously the fact that there was a vacancy and put in a lot of different names. So that was interesting. Another thing to be very proud of, four years ago, we had 69% turnout in Elmwood Park. And it looks like we're going to be, when everything is counted, at a between 76% and 78% turnout in Elmwood Park, which, I mean, you'd probably have to go back decades to find a turnout that high. So that's very positive stuff, and it's good that people voted and people took the time to care. One very nice piece of news that we received in the last few days. On December 10, the Bergen County Open Space Advisory Committee will be reviewing the recommendations they received from the county, Bergen County, as to open space awards for this next round, the 2020 round. And I'm pleased to say that we had asked for $375,000 for the Marina Project, and proposed is $375,000 for the Marina Project. And that's significant in many ways, but one of which is that out of 62 towns that applied for the Municipal Park Improvement Program of that whole program, we received the second highest award of 62 municipalities. We asked for more, but we received the second highest, and that's us getting money, that's grant money, that's not Elmwood Park taxpayer dollar to fund our projects. So essentially, you know, once this is on paper that the advisory committee is getting this, usually, outside of something crazy happening, it usually happens in the end. So we're at $625,000 in grant dollars for that project. We awarded design services maybe a month or two ago. So the way I see it, I would hope that the engineer completes that process by the end of the year. I think that's reasonable. I think it's reasonable for it to be bid out shortly after, and I think it's reasonable for us to approve a bid in February. And if everything goes well, and the only big question mark is DEP and the river, so I don't want to go too far out there. But it's feasible that we could have a product for our residents to enjoy for summer 2021. And again, it's significant because we got $250,000 from Green Acres, which up until four years ago, Elmwood Park was never applying for. Nobody was applying for this money. Every two years, it was free money on the table, and for whatever reason, Elmwood Park was not going after this money. So $250,000 from Green Acres, $375,000 from County of Bergen. More than 50% of this project will be grant money, and we could have just floated a bond and said, yeah, we want to do this. But we took the time, we applied for the grants, and we're going to give the residents a wonderful product for basically more than 50% off. So I'm very, very excited about that. It's all about elevating what we offer our residents, and it's good news. It's a cause for celebration. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel. That is good news. Whenever you can get close to 60% free money on a project, you've got to really be out of your cotton-picking brains not to accept it, in plain English. That is good news. The only thing is, don't we have to go through an ordinance that... We have to vote on this, the council?
To do what?
To move forward on that project.
Well, we awarded design services to the engineer, so...
We already bonded it out, Mayor.
It bonded out, so we don't have to go through any more legal procedure?
No, it was already bonded, and whatever you don't spend, you know, it will just go back.
Very good. Okay. Thank you for that, Daniel. Mrs. Ingui, would you like to go now, or you want us to wait for?
Are you going to say that every time?
Every time.
No, progress, Mayor. I got nothing.
Mrs. Pellegrine?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Board of Health update. The next rabies clinic will be held on Wednesday, November 18, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at Firehouse Number 4 on Mola Boulevard. Their next meeting will be held on Monday, November 23, at 7:00 PM. The meeting that they had scheduled for this past Monday the 9th was canceled, and that's why it's rescheduled on the 23rd. Residents Assistance Update. The residents' assistance had their fall leaf cleanup on November 8 to help our residents in need. The weather was beautiful. Over 60 volunteers were on hand to get the job done. A special thank you to all those who participated with the cleanup. Azaz organization, Immaculate Conception High School students, Elmwood Park Cub Scouts PAC 8, Elmwood Park Community members, Officer Joe Pride, RAP coordinators Angela Fava and Dion York, Chief Philigno, and the entire department for all the background checks to keep everyone safe. Teamwork made it a very successful day. We were very happy. Mrs. Fava got a lot of calls the next day. The residents were thanking her on how great everybody was, all the volunteers were, and they were very happy and were very blessed by all the help that we got for our community. Thank you, Mayor. Progress.
Thank you, Ms. Pellegrine. And I'd like to just say one thing about this progress that Mrs. Pellegrine is making, and she's spearheading this specific organization. In the past, it's always been sporadic. We'd get a year where some kids would show up, maybe sometimes poorly organized. But I must say, you're doing a very efficient job with this...
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Entity. Okay. Council President Balistrari.
Okay, just one thing. I just thank you, Councilman Goleback, for updating the community on such important information. We're so proud of the hard work that was put in to get this grant money and very excited to see the project get started. But other than that, progress.
Thank you. Well, yesterday, we had a good moment for Elmwood Park. We were celebrating our veterans. There was a nice turnout. We had our police guard there, which was very nicely done. The procedure itself went smoothly, and the best part of it was St. Leo's brought, I guess, all the classes at the time to the curb line, across the street naturally, and the children were there witnessing the ceremony, which is what Veterans Day is all about, which is remembering. And it's our job as adults to make sure that's conveyed to our children and their children, protect this great nation and the liberties that we have sometimes taken for granted. Mr. Laney, where are we?
If you are finished with your report, Mayor, we can open it up for a public hearing.
Thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on any issue? Your name and address, please?
My cue is 14 Phillipa.
Welcome.
Nice to see everybody showed up, which means everybody's healthy. Hope everybody home is healthy also. My issue, which I'm going to bring up, is a lengthy one. It started 30 years ago, still combating the same issue of illegal residences. I have a two-family home next door to me, renting a studio apartment in the basement. 30 years ago, the fire department was called in. They reported it. The owner put the house up for sale, published it as a two-family with a studio. Since then, it still had it. Every time I've either called the building department or zoning board, we can't find anything. As far back as, if anybody remembers Charlie Camarriata being in the building inspector's office, told me I had to come down, sign a formal complaint. I did. Found nothing. Now, I actually have proof positive. My first suspicion 30 years ago is when the first tenant came over and asked me to use my phone, because the landlord would not allow them to have a phone. Why not? Now, multiple listing services, the house was just resold as an executive deed. The studio apartment, there are photographs online, shows a range hood, a stove, a refrigerator, and a sink. It is rented out at $1,200 a month. It is a two-family zone. For 30 years that I know of, they've been collecting three rents in a two-family zone and paying taxes on a two-family home, which means for 30 years that I know of, somebody's been robbing money from this town, okay? If you research, which I did, Borough Ordinance S11-3.1 defines a dwelling unit, apartment, flat, living unit, shall mean any... I've got to read there better. My own chicken's breast, I can't read. Shall mean any room or group of rooms located within a dwelling or building and forming a single habitable unit for more, one or more persons for the purpose of living, sleeping, cooking, and toilet and bathing needs. That constitutes a department. Multiple dwellings shall mean any dwelling containing two or more dwelling units. We got three. Occupant shall mean any person over one year of age, living, sleeping, cooking, or eating in, or having actual possession of a dwelling unit or living unit. Now, I got pictures from multiple listing services that shows a kitchen and everything. Some sites...
Excuse me. Like, they're advertising this apartment?
It was just rented for $1,200 a month.
But you have actual proof that they're advertising it?
Yeah, right here.
In the basement?
Right here. It's online. Right here, rented, okay? That's the house. It's a two-family house. They're renting the basement, room in the back. That doesn't show the picture of the basement, though.
Are they being specific about the basement?
Yeah. Ground floor. It says ground floor, okay? For 30 years, I've been doing this. Now I finally got it in black and white, which means for 30 years, nobody has done anything. Rented, $1,200 a month. One bedroom, one bath, ground floor, living room, bedroom, kitchen, bathroom.
Is this the same copy on the...
It's on all different websites. You can see right here on mine. This one is compass.com. Compass.com. I got it from Remax. I got it from all. Now, if you remember, two years ago, when I was doing a renovation on my house, I came in, we had all the paperwork done. The calendar was on the website from the previous year. So we almost... so we almost missed the meeting. You was intra-mayor at the time, right after Richie passed. You and Golombeski, Golombeski agreed that if I had all the paperwork in by Sunday, we'd still go ahead. We did that, but I jumped through flaming hoops. When this house was sold in January of this year, and the new owners took over, they would gut the inside of the house without a permit, doing major plumbing, major electrical. And I know because I was in that home before that. The rooms had fluorescent lights around the perimeter. Now they all have recessed lighting in the ceilings. We don't know if it was a licensed electrician, licensed plumber. Plumbing, I don't care about. Electrical, I do, because that could be a fire. I called, nothing happened. I called, nothing happened. It wasn't until I contacted a council member that the work stopped and then restarted in a week after a permit was issued. But how does the building inspector give a CO with an illegal apartment in a two-family zone? The electrical inspector came to my house, made the electrician move a ceiling box, because it was an eighth of an inch lower than it should be. Eighth of an inch, busting my chops. This house is going on like this forever. Plus, they've never had decent tenants there. Two tenants ago were the best tenants we had. One time, we had the kid on the first floor set his mother's car on fire, because he was mad at it. Now I got a 16-year-old, smart-ass punk, all right, that's making my family feel uneasy living there. Police have been to that house numerous times. What are you saying?
All right. I have, the way it's listed, I can't get an understanding of whether it's the first floor or...
Ground floor, it says.
But it says ground floor, but I'm not familiar with that.
Well, the picture shows two stories, and then a ground floor behind it.
If I may, I would like to turn around and potentially have a copy of what you just have right there. I can address it with the building department, and I'll be happy to do that.
Oh, yeah, I'll give you another picture.
You don't need to do that. That's my job.
Oh, all right.
I don't, you don't need to do that. Mr. Biebers, if you'd just give me the documentation, I will have a full investigation done by our building inspector.
Okay. Now... If what you're saying is true, it's a violation.
Oh, it is a violation, because I know it's a violation, all right? Here's a picture that shows you the apartment leading right out to the patio in the basement. Shows you, it's the basement, because the house is a rained house, okay?
Well, Mike, what we have to do now is prove that it's an illegal dwelling. So now that we got this information here, allow our VA to go forth with what he just said. Let him have a conversation with the building inspector tomorrow morning, and we'll take it from that point.
This information I've been bringing to the council for 30 years.
Yeah, but you might have a little more now with this advertisement.
But we had enough. When the building inspector went in there and gave him a CO, he had the third apartment downstairs.
If I may...
Yes, please.
I don't know what inspired it, the sales, okay, but if there was what gentleman's described downstairs as a block apartment, a first-floor apartment, and a second floor and a third floor, any inspection that reveals that there are any combination of kitchen, sleeping, and bathing, it becomes a violation. So now, the question is, a lot of times, is that the inspectors don't have the authority to just walk in and allow it to go, allowed it.
Right.
Now, I'm not, I don't know whether that's happened or not, so I think it's just a matter of having the building department check into it, like the chief just said, and I'm sure that the chief is going to go.
I understand that point, that they can't just walk in, but if there was a permit issued for the work, building inspector has to go back and sign off on it, like they did with me for a CO.
Let me guess...
So when he went in there and he did an inspection on the whole house for the work, how could he pass that apartment downstairs?
Well, here's, I'm not going to presume or assume what happened, okay? But there has been various scenarios, that a lot of times, a two-family house may have a third kitchen, what they call a summer kitchen in the basement, combination of a bathroom. It can be regarded as an extension of the first floor. I don't know how it was examined or looked at, or when they inspected it, or whether anything that was done downstairs with no permits until... This is the first time I...
See, I understand that part with the stove and everything, because when we bought our house, they wanted, I was going to get assessed as a two-family, because the people who had the house before us, they were old country, they lived in the basement, they got all the furniture on the first floor, had plastic on it, they had a stove. When they came in, you got two kitchens. This is a two-family. Come back and do the inspection in a week. I had the stove out, the gas line capped off, I'm back to a one-family. But we're a two-family zone. They should not be allowed to collect three rents in the neighborhood.
We agree with you. We agree with you for sure, Mike.
Because the other two apartments are six over six, three bedrooms each, all right? Those are $2,600 a month. $400 for a one-bedroom below. It's a lot of money that they've been collecting, and a lot of money the town is losing in taxes. I mean, my taxes are going up. Theirs are going up too, but theirs are going up on a two-family, not a three, all right? We've gone through this. It was reported as an illegal apartment 30 years ago, when the fire department was there. Now, I say now, even with all of this, the people that owned the house, in all the years I've been there, have never lived there. It's just an income property, all right? And I can count on one hand how many decent residents were there. Now I got a new one there, we have a problem with him. Then, month or two later, his buddies are picking him up, dog bobs at the window to see what, my wife goes to see what's going on. One of his buddies gets out of the car and urinates on my front lawn. My wife calls the police. Kids take off. By the time the police get there, we can't do nothing, because the kid's not here, we can't talk to him. Tuesday, I called again, I filed another complaint. I got a copy of the complaint here. Kid comes out of the house, the dog is barking. You know, anybody who's got a dog knows, your dog goes crazy by the window, you want to see why he's going crazy. My wife is by the door, looked out the door, kid gets in the car, flips it a bird, as they pull away from the house. We filed the complaint. My wife goes down, signs it, she's told by the officer, he's a minor, he would have to go to county. Most likely, the judge is going to throw it out, saying it's nothing, he just flipped it a bird. But nobody went and knocked on the door and said, hey, lady, your son's causing trouble in the neighborhood. He's got to behave, or he's going to wind up in juvie. Nothing.
My parents were police officers, Mr. Biebers.
Yeah, I know, but if a complaint is signed, you cannot go in.
That's not our job. We don't parent children.
Okay, well, I spoke to the lady myself on Saturday, and the nut doesn't fall far from the tree. I spoke to her nicely. Her answer to me is, and I'm going to play it exactly the way she said it, I'm not your wife, I'm not your bitch, don't tell me what to do. So I mean, now, people in the neighborhood are living uneasy, because they don't know what this kid's about. So, you know, my wife's a lifelong resident. This is the first time she's worried to be in this town.
You know, Mike, I'm sorry that you have a neighbor like that. That's the worst thing in the world, when you have a neighbor that you can't get along with. But I think the issue here is the illegal apartment, which you've got to allow us to look into and to make sure that whatever we do is within the limits of the law. Unfortunately, that's the situation. If you please leave that information. Mike, are you going to take it? You...
Yeah, I'll give it to them when the meeting's over.
All right. We appreciate it, and I guarantee you, we will follow up as far as we can go with this.
Yeah, like I say, it should be stopped. And if it's stopped, do we have an ordinance officer in town that could monitor this house? I know Mike Ruggiero used to be an ordinance officer. He used to go around poking people's garbage.
Well, talk about your building department.
Okay, will they monitor the house afterwards to make sure it doesn't start again?
We have one of the best building inspectors around, so once this is brought to his attention... You know him?
He was at my house. He's the one who busted my chops over my...
Tony and Broshel?
Yes.
Okay. He's good, he doesn't break down.
He made the electrician move those ceiling boxes, it was an eight-minute draw.
Excellent building inspector, and he will be on topic as soon as I go through the town.
All right. I really hope so.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else care to speak from the ordinance?
Hello, Dominic Scalcione.
Hello, Dominic.
Can you give me?
Yes, we can.
120 East 54th Street. I share the sentiment of... Good evening, Mayor, Council President and Council. I share the sentiment of gratitude with all residents for your service to us during the pandemic crisis. Last week, Elmwood Park had 59 new COVID-19 cases, which was one of the highest infection rates for the county. If I'm not mistaken, the Rec Center, Senior Center remain closed, and there are restrictions on the number of people who can enter Borough Hall. Now, some communities, such as Fairland, Black Rock, and Portland, provide periodic updates to residents, including new case counts. Is there anything more we can do here in Elmwood Park to increase awareness of the number of cases and the need to continue to use safe practices to prevent infection?
Mr. Feligno?
Thank you.
Mr. Scalcione, I appreciate your attention to this and your emails and your concern. I'm not sure there's anything else that could be said about COVID-19 that hasn't been said already. If people aren't, if it doesn't have people's attention by now, an email blast, a robo-call, nothing's going to change that. It's not unique to Elmwood Park. I think it's coincidental that our cases are up. There's not anything in Elmwood Park that people are doing or not doing that's causing an increase. Bergen County has broken up into 70 municipalities, and the virus doesn't recognize borders. So I don't know what else could be done. Could we tell everybody every day, wear a mask, wash your hands, social distance? I guess, but is that going to make a difference? I don't personally think so. I think we've done all we can, and I'm not sure that there's anything, this short of a vaccine and, you know, getting through the winter, that is going to make the virus start to go back into the other direction.
My concern is for people that are extremely vulnerable, elderly people especially, if they were more aware that we have a high infection rate, they would take more precautions. In other words, are we doing anything special in Elmwood Park, or we just depending on the state and what Governor Murphy is saying, or are we putting out any messages? I looked all over our website, and, you know, I don't see anything that says that, you know, we're really having, you know, a problem here.
Like I said, it's redundancy. What else could we possibly say? I don't, I don't, does anybody know what else we could possibly say?
The things that I mentioned, that some towns are sending out periodic updates to their residents.
I mean, do you think that's going to...
Should we do that?
I mean, I don't think it's going to make a difference, to be honest with you. People, everybody knows COVID-19, everybody knows what causes it, everybody knows, I mean, I don't see that making any bit of a difference, and I don't see that anything, like I said, being done or not done in Elmwood Park is causing this. I could tell you this, I get the updates every few days from the county, I get the names of the residents and the addresses. I can tell you what I've noticed in the past, say, four weeks. We're getting a lot of two, three, four, five people in one home, which makes the numbers look greater, but what I make of that is, families are gathering, people are interacting in groups, Halloween parties, whatever, and I think that's, or kids went back to school. Are they carrying, are they bringing it back home? You're seeing spikes in households, so, you know, I don't know what else could be done or said about it, and I do appreciate your concern. Very well. You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? If not, I'll close the public portion. May I have a motion to go into executive?
Okay.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Where's the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and where is this public bodies of the opinion[1777.12]